Of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
He'll be missed.
Yes, he will be missed. Okay, we'll call the order, the town of Spencer council meeting for Monday, November third, twenty twenty five. Call meeting to order, we've had our pledge, roll call, John Stantz and Evan McCallum, the counselor here, our town attorney is Richard Maritz, the town clerk is here, Cheryl Moke and Heather, our technical personnel has not had much luck, and our guest, and we've been, we have one head of the street department here tonight, Terry Sips is currently transferring an individual to Hendrick County, so he won't be here, and I've not, did you hear anything from Ryan today?
He will not be here.
Okay.
He had nothing, and I thought maybe he sent you a message.
I did not see.
I didn't see one, that was being, wasn't sent.
All right. So up first is approval of mention of previous keys. I have read them, have you read them?
Yeah, I, I read them, they look fine to me.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept ministers present.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next, public issues.
We didn't have any public issues this time.
We did have not any.
Bobby, can you come up with a public issue for us?
Yes, I will say that it patched the whole downhill side.
They did.
Yes, the very first day.
It was the next day.
Yeah, so we gotta take care of it.
If you can bear in mind and understand what I'm talking about, when you come from the west or the east to the stoplight, and you converge to right around the corner like you're gonna go into sixty seven north.
Uh huh.
They have removed a sign that was there, yield back mean, and all the stuff that's done, and they're whipping around that thing fast, and there's, the sign should be replaced. So do you have a contact with?
I can call Seymour and have, here's why they replaced, why they removed it.
Okay.
Every time they put a new one up, it got ran over.
Well?
The semi, the semis cut in the corner, they ran over numerous, numerous times.
Twice in the last two weeks, I've almost got hit.
Now here's, and here's the legality of the law, if the light's green, you have, you can turn.
Right.
If it's red, you're supposed to stop and check and make sure that nobody turning.
Yeah.
Okay, they didn't make that a yield, they, they, they might replace it, I don't know, but I'll ask, so.
It is a bad situation.
I know.
So which way they go with it?
I know.
It's something to read that, maybe there's not a good answer, John, I don't know.
Well, I, I don't know, a- a- anyway, that's just, that's what was explained to me the last time, it was there, then it wasn't there.
Boy, that's dangerous coming out of that drive.
Oh, I know, I know, yeah, they just, they just come on, and they don't stop for nothing.
No.
Yeah, okay, but I will, I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask Seymour.
Okay, thank you.
You want that in public issue?
Yeah, I, I probably just didn't announce, I think we don't really have any.
Cheryl wants you to read this.
Okay, oh, okay, this, under public issues, uh, due to Mike's passing, we have an empty spot here on the town council, so this is a call of political party caucus to fill an early ballot vacancy for city or town office, there's a four, a state forum, four nine oh three nine, and the, uh, Indiana Election Commission, uh, this is the statute that rules all this, notice a party caucus to fill a candidate, candidate vacancy as the newly elected or designated chairman of the caucus, the Democrat Party, uh, under IC three thirteen one eight, called Caucus of the Party, and caucus will be held at five forty-five P M, November fourteenth, twenty twenty five, at the following location, one fifty-two East Jefferson Street, here in Spencer, as the Indiana, uh, Owen County Democrat Headquarters, the purpose of this caucus to select nominees for certain offices to be elected in the next municipal election, from which the party currently has a candidate vacancy, namely Indiana's Spencer Indiana Town Council member, and so the chairman will direct, uh, must send this notice by first class mail, at least ten days before the meeting, to all persons eligible to participate in the meeting, uh, this notice also must date the time, place, and purpose of the caucus, chairman must also file competence notice at, at least noon, ten days before the meeting with the appropriate cert. clerk, and anyway, uh, I s- I certify that I mailed this notice by first class mail to all persons eligible to participate in this caucus, uh, dated this third day of November twenty twenty five, Chairman of the Owen County Democrat Party, Bill Brayden, so.
And I think he's putting up several public places.
Yeah.
So that's tomorrow that they have to file that?
No.
No, it's, it's Friday is the last day.
Okay.
I thought you said ten days before the fourteenth.
Yeah, no, is, they have to, they have to file that paperwork today, ten, fourteen, just not to have people tomorrow, yeah, so, yeah, so, okay, so that takes care of that. Department reports, uh, Terry's sent me a text, he's on his, he's, uh, at, I think the endville is where the sheriff's office is, in Hendrick County, isn't it? I think that's where they're at, uh, he said that, he, nothing to report on personnel or equipment, on operations, the Halloween rolls went really well, about two hundred and forty hot dogs and bags of chips was given out, and the list is drink, trick or treat, uh, under training, our two officers at Academy are doing well, uh, and that's, he said, I don't have anything else, so, I said, no problem, be safe, so, that's what Mr. Chief Sips. Sir, department, Ryan's not here, I don't have any kind of.
He had nothing.
Nothing, okay.
No expensive parts to purchase today?
No, he said nothing.
Not buying anything? Okay, street department.
Two of the three departments was good to you.
Oh, no! Oh, man.
What's it gonna cost today?
Always something. Oh, I get a little light. Oh, be fun. Leaf season, still going strong, uh. When's the last day? December first or whatever, around in there, I'm not sure what day that falls on.
December first ish.
Yeah, December first ish is very good.
Now, we usually still, I shouldn't say this because we're being recorded, but we usually still pick up for a couple of weeks after that.
I know.
We officially call it, try to get people to, let's get them ready.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the public restrooms, normally we would do it, we would have done it last week, locked them up, but Marcy's called me, and they have something going on this week, they asked if they could wait as long as we can, I was watching the weather, and it looks like Sunday night is as late as we can, so by the end of this week, we'll have it winterized.
Just go on warm back up to the seventies after this week.
Yeah, this weekend's supposed to be, what, twenty-eight and snowy?
It ain't gonna, it ain't gonna freeze.
So, I mean, do you want us to wait another, another week?
I mean, if, if she, if, if they're done Saturday, go ahead and lock.
I don't know, they were gonna call me, they were supposed to call me back today, and but nobody ever did, so.
All right, yeah.
I just figured the end of the week, we would just do it.
Sounds good to me.
Um, your stop signs at Sycamore and Market, um, locates are done, we have the posts set up, ready for signs whenever you guys want signs and flashy lights put up, we can do it.
Has that notice been, uh, made public, Richard?
I'm sorry?
Is that, is that notice for the stop signs on Sycamore?
I've got it, I've circled it, I'm gonna check on that, yeah.
Okay, all right.
They can go, they can go up at any event.
Okay, all right.
Um, so do you want us maybe wait until our next meeting and revisit that, or go ahead and go?
When you say, go ahead and put them up, they just can't enforce it.
People got you to go them anyway, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, please, thank you.
Um, our garage door is caused, it's, I've been reporting on this for a month and a half, we've thrown some parts at it, we've had overhead door there, it's just done.
Okay.
That's the moral of the story, um, I was able, when overhead door on one of their visits, they gave me a quote here for thirty-two fifty, um, one of the other guys recommended this Hayden garage door, I don't know him, but they said he's a great guy, and he does good work, and his bid was twenty-one thirty-one, um, so it's kinda.
It's a big difference?
Yeah, it is a big difference, he's a, he's not Wilmington overhead door, he's John Hayden's garage doors.
Okay, yeah, okay.
It, it's kinda up to you guys, I mean, I, I got kinda mixed feelings, overhead doors are the ones that's installed them, they're trusted, they'll come service them when we need it, but we're talking a thousand dollars difference, so maybe it's, I.
Well, well, I mean, he'll come and service it?
I, I suppose. Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it's.
I.
Is the overhead door charging to come service them as well anywhere?
Yes, and overhead door does, they don't have their own brand of opener, so it's, they probably all come from the same warehouse.
Probably, yeah.
Somewhere anyway, so.
All right.
It, it's up to you guys, um, you know, who, who you want me to call, or you know, somebody else.
Yeah, I just, the main thing is we get it repaired before snowplow trucks.
Yeah, they need it now. Okay, there's the two of them, if you want to rock at them, or if that helps anything.
It's more or less where you quoted for the same mechanism, same, you know, horsepower, I know it's always like a half horsepower, or whatever it is, well, you have a big door probably, so.
Yeah, they're fourteen foot, it's a commercial size opener.
So you think, if, one's not a little rinky-dink opener, they're both gonna be equivalent?
Yes, as far as that, yeah.
Yeah, it's all a lift national operator.
Yeah, see, that's the same thing they got, so.
I would go with the cheaper one.
Yeah, I would say the fourth is this one here, so. All right.
Is there a warranty on either one of those?
I, I assume that the warranty is the, the manufacturer warranty, not a warranty to either company.
Yeah, if we can get that information from them, to be honest, uh, I'd make a motion then that, uh, we would approve the quote for the garage door opener for the street department from Head and Lawn Care and Garage Door, uh, for twenty, two thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars and five cents.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Um. The third?
Yeah.
You with this, Cheryl?
Yeah, I don't need his context, but.
Okay.
Sure. Um, our banners that go on the street, like posts, poles, um, I don't know how old they are now, they're probably ten years, but they're getting pretty raggedy, so, we had some priced, um, with some different companies, um, the best one I found, and I, I apologize, I can't remember, I know it was under my, my spendable allotment, so it was under a thousand dollars, but we replaced ten of them, or I ordered ten of them, um, they haven't come in yet, I don't think, but they should be anytime, um, so we're gonna change them up a little bit, and then maybe next year, if these work out next year, we'll replace.
More.
I think there's eighteen of them total, so it's a good, it's a good start, and I got, you know, like, two of every design that they had, so, um. Okay. Um, and the last thing I had here, oh, um, the Parks and Rec, um, Colleen, is that right? Colleen Maillard. She called me, and she wants to borrow an operator and a bucket truck, she wanted for sure on the day to hang some lights or decorations or something in Cooper's Park, um, so her, me, and Scott are all organizing the day that's available, but I just wanted to get preapproval if I need to, uh, have somebody work a couple hours, have Scott work a couple hours overtime on a Saturday, whatever, whatever's working for the plot.
I don't have a problem with it. And in fact, it may be getting moved from that Saturday into the week, so that might even fall in your normal schedule.
And if it does, that, that's, that's great too, or if it's after, I just wanted to get, get approval that nobody throws a fit if we have to pay somebody after hours, a few hours, to.
Okay.
To come do that, so.
Okay.
Um, I know they're wanting to get it done before the Christmas on the square.
Right, okay, they'll be within that week.
Other than that, I think that's everything I have, do you have any, my goodness, questions or concerns for me?
I.
Oh, you're thinking too hard, I don't want to. Well, I don't think so, Tony.
We have had, just be upfront, we have had during leaf season, the police has been called on us twice now for impeding traffic.
Oh, goodness.
Oh, Terry come down, semi truck driver was on Market Street blowing his horn, and.
He was probably on the street when the, when they took those big things through, there was one semi that just, it took like a half an hour to go.
Well, he was trying to get to Cast Stone, and he was raising cane, and he called the police, and Terry came down, he's like, oh, it was you guys, we're not gonna speed through here dragging two guys and a hose behind us.
Sure, sure.
But other, I mean, leaf season's going okay, the equipment?
Okay, good, good. All right, great, well, thank you very much, yes.
Okay, uh, he may be aware of it anyway, the cross markings at the school of.
Oh, yeah, one of them come up.
They're coming up, is there a way that we can collect those and get them stepped back down?
I don't think so, because you melt them down, I think that it's a one shot.
Yeah, they were melted.
And, and we paid, I don't know if, if you remember, I'm sure John.
It's not twice what we normally call.
Right.
We bought some expensive perm, permanent meltdown, and we wanted to try and see if it was more reasonable than spray paint every four or five months.
I think we should talk to the company.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Just to see.
Or can you re-melt them? Or once it's.
No, once you melt the adhesive down.
Okay, it doesn't seem like they should be, because that was just done before school, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Before school, so that's just a few months.
Does that not have any better solution for it?
Yeah, uh, the paint that they use now actually has reflective, uh, chips inside it.
Right.
And, uh, what they do on the side for the fog line on highways. I mean, we would get a good year out of easily.
But it's a thermoplastic paint, and these are thermoplastic sticker, that's why you have to melt them down.
I don't know, so, but I, I know, uh, the paint shop at Columbus, uh, has it available, and I can find out who they're, who they buy their shroom.
But to answer your question, we do still have a partial row left over, so we can probably go up and square, square the cuts off, and it's not gonna be as good as one continuous line, but, okay.
All right, I did, I seen that the other day too, yeah, so, all right, do anything else then, Tony?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I dropped it, that's okay.
Right, well, we already talked about the, um, the lift, so I can skip that.
Okay.
Uh, progress is continuing down on the Cooper improvement, um, they got the top rails to the fence posts set up, um, there's some siding up on the building, um, they're out there hosing off the asphalt, so they're, they're continuing.
As of today on that one, I'm up by basketball goals.
Oh, the little ones, okay, those weren't up when I drove by around three o'clock evening, so.
Oh, they shouldn't.
Or I maybe didn't notice.
Yeah, I don't think you noticed them, because.
Okay, it was this morning. It was this morning, all right, well, I won't stand on that forever, but, all right, um, we're wanting to do a, were we able to pull up the flyer for the, the Christmas? I showed John it on my phone at least, um, so the short story of this, and Andrea White came up with this idea, and she came into the parks meeting of getting, trying to get people to sponsor some lights, basically, so they kinda get to put their name up in a little sign, and then like, so, you know, such and such group paid to light up a shelter, or such and such group paid to light up one of the big, you know, um, evergreens down there, and just put a little bit more decoration in, Christmas razzle dazzle down there than, we've just been stapling some bows on this stuff the last couple of years, and it's, you know, it's something, but it's hopefully a little bit more, and then getting some community sponsorship, um, so we're hoping to, um, continue with that.
Are they writing a check to town Spencer, how are they?
I believe we're doing that, um, through the community foundation, yeah, registered through the community foundation, there's QR code, so we don't have to handle that, it's a pass through, yeah, um, so that's kind of our current project that we're screaming to get done.
For Christmas.
Yeah.
For the holidays.
And then we're, we're, we're trying to nail down a, um, a date actually for the parks board to gather, and we'll do the actual decoration, so, hopefully a little bit of help for the high to reach spots.
Okay, all right.
That's a little bit shorter, the parks update, unless I'm forgetting something.
Is there any report on the lot next to what we're doing?
We're, I'm working on that, Bobby.
Okay, yeah.
There's a, uh, well, it's kind of related to the parks board, but the community foundation has a three to one, well, two to one match on donations.
Oh, right.
Parks Board, uh, is listed as one of those, uh, funds.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Two more?
Yeah, that's not bad. All right, planning and zoning.
Uh, we did have meetings, uh, this week, and all for both planning and zoning and B Z A, uh, everything was fine, uh, we're experiencing a little bit of difficulty with getting a quorum on the planning commission with Mike out, so, and all, obviously, and we got a couple people who have vacations away from the area, we'll be okay in November, December, but we will need to get some additional, uh, help on that later on.
Okay.
Uh, I've got a list here, incidentally, I wanna pass up, these are three of the positions that Mike has been filling recently that will probably need to be upgraded when you get a new council person, I think, uh, can't really do anything until we get the third council person off, but these are the three boards in which we'll need membership.
Okay.
Okay, um, the, uh, ancillary dwelling unit, uh, resolution was, uh, looked at by the, uh, planning commission, they're very favorable towards good, yes, and done, there were some tweaks in some of the real mechanics of what would be allowed on the premises, I'm gonna share that with the board, I think I'd still like to have our new council member participate in that particular resolution, because it's gonna have a big impact, and I, I think they need to be fully briefed on it.
Sure.
Ahead of time, so probably in December, we'll try to get that done.
Okay, all right, okay, anything for redevelopment?
No, we'll, I'll talk with Bob Swinson all, and he's gonna prepare the appropriate documentation, and I'll report a little bit more about that more earlier.
All right, okay, fire territory, we have a meeting next Monday, don't be downer, so. Okay, all right, Mr. Attorney?
Okay, I have prepared four, um, packages for those persons that we are seeking a permanent and temporary easements on, on our wastewater project.
Oh, yeah.
Avenue list station, okay, these are very comprehensive, they describe the intended work and the need for that work and all, they have diagrams showing the areas of taking, the measurements of it, uh, appraisals that we have concocted together that show how much would be for the temporary and, and the permanent ones, uh, and I do need to have these signed and authorized by the town board, and they require your signature job in each of the places on each of these packages, and we'll send these out in, um, by mail, of course, initially, I do think it'd be good to make some sort of personal contact with these people as well.
Okay.
These are packages that will talk about the compensation, but within the package is an opportunity for them to make a donation of these, okay?
Okay.
So you have to make the computation and show them what that would be, they have an opportunity to make it a donation.
Okay, just to say, hey, go ahead and do it.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll pass these over to you for signature, we don't have to delay the meeting right now, you give it to the air afterwards.
Okay.
I'll take care of making copies of these and getting a copy back from your file.
Okay, thanks. Sign them in.
Over for you?
So, um, did wanna report that Cheryl, I met with Janet Rumble from Owen Community Foundation, uh, we discussed a couple of things, one is the signage over the main street and potential park location, uh, and she is going to, um, get in contact with the appropriate people, discuss the vision, perspectives of what could be done, and will try to help us on trying to see what we can do to, uh, enhance that, the caveat and nuance is, we may need to come back to the redevelopment budget, which is due by the end of the year, and tweak what we put into the budget to do, okay, because there may be something we need to have on there, we've talked about combinations of donations and a hybrid of donation and payment, uh, there's lots of factors that go into that, and we've talked about that, the other project was, um, on the mainstream contract, okay, we, I have given Janet a, a list of possible entities and persons who we hope might be willing to give a donation towards the, the implementation of that project, and I went ahead and wrote to, uh, Mike Wilson today, asking him if he could give us a little synopsis of what are the benefits for users, uh, going into that project, uh, we were talking about the fact that we believe that the tier speed that you would have would be better under this fiber optic, uh, alternative, and the connectivity with one system throughout would avoid the bottlenecks that you have right now, particularly people like Cook in Boston with their three D graphics and stuff like that, and their implementation to be enhanced, I think Boston is going to Indianapolis to do some of its graphics works now, okay, they still are, and then some of our retail merchants are in need of using it for their square, uh, connections and all, because they lose transactions if they're, if they're down for twenty-four hours type thing, we've got several commercial businesses that have been, uh, experiencing brownouts, blackouts because of interruptions in Comcast and like and all, so there's a number of issues that we need to do, and we need to make sure that people are understanding what the affordability of various plans that they have would be, uh, we talked about getting possibly some people who would endorse their programs in Nashville, Salem, places like that, to give a, a, a community.
Deal to.
Face to it and all, yeah, uh, it's gotta be understood that this is not just one place you're doing, it's the entire community, okay? It will be literally replace many of the things that are there right now, uh, for the good and bad of that and all, so, uh, we will have to convince everybody about what that's all about.
Well, I, I will say this, I'm pretty happy with my AT&T right now. And that's what Lisa has at the shop, however, if we could get a step up, she hasn't had any trouble with her square, and Laura hasn't at the antique store, but if we could get a step up and make the entire thing one, it would be great.
We need to have a, the five-year horizon of those things, uh, understood, because in five years, the general concept of the internet is we're going to have tiered speeds that you can get into and capacities, that's gonna be the next level of things, plus the fact, again, that the reliability of these systems in various, uh, ways, both environmentally and otherwise, are gonna be called into question, so.
Something Bobby's not gonna wanna hear, but I'm gonna say it anyway.
Oh, here.
Today, McDonald's announced about the penny, and so they put a whole new thing out, because of the shortage, and because they're gonna discontinue the penny, they're gonna have a system of either rounding up or rounding down, they're encouraging you to use a credit card or a debit card to be completely cashless, with that said, they, in five years, they figure that almost eighty percent of their transactions will be with a debit or a credit card.
That's true.
And, and I think you're, Taco Bell is pushing that way, uh, a lot of places are, the quilt store leases, is almost ninety percent.
I haven't used any, anything but a credit card.
Yeah, our, our business is dramatically more covered than.
I'm, I'm, I'm still a cash guy, so, but anyway, but that's what, that's what, I know, but that's what, that's what is, is headed towards, and so, yeah, so this, this here will work right into that.
So, uh, and I do have a draft copy of the broadband economic development agreement and all, now, I'm a little confused here, did Marcy say she was going to put together the vetting process for the tax abatement that's part of the precursor to this?
I thought so, yes.
Um, I, I.
They said one hundred percent for the first five years, that's surprising.
The proposal is that we would grant them a tax abatement for one percent of the personal property, uh, on that, I, I don't think that's a problem or off the table, but it requires a public hearing, okay?
Yes.
And that process, okay, uh, we can get the contract, uh, signed, you, you could sign the contract, but that precursor is built into this particular project and all, so we need to get that part worked out, and I, I couldn't reach Marcy today to find out where that process stands.
Okay.
Okay.
She was probably waiting to see if we were going to sign it, because she was, I mean, she gave us the contract to begin with.
They had questioned the idea of whether or not they could get a longer than five year period of time. And Mike issued this today with the five years in there, okay? You can consider it again in five years, and that's basically what I think the dialogue has been so far.
Well, I know that Max Banks, he said, do we really need to go longer than five years? I said, I don't think so.
And so now they just wanna revisit it in five years and if we say no again.
So we need to let her know, this is what's going on.
Well, um, the five-year abatement, uh, and our contribution and what we can get as additional pledges and donations and all. Would make this a very viable plan and not, uh, damage our other projects that we all have to do.
Sure.
If that's, that's the overall mission of it and all.
Yeah.
So if you want to, uh, uh, sign on to this particular contract, I'm a little disappointed that the project, project plans are not attached to this document. We have that habit all the time, the engineering plans and the project plans are part of the exhibits to it, but we don't have those at all.
Okay.
Um, if you wanna pass the authorization to sign this when those documents are confirmed and the process for the. Abatement are, is, is initiated, I think that would be an appropriate timing on this.
Okay.
Okay, so you would say.
I'm, I'm probably deferring to Richard.
authorize it to be signed, it will hold it right now, so we can just go.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Um, I'll make that motion to authorize the holding to sign at the appropriate.
I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, um. If you have any time in the next, uh, fourteen days or so, that we could visit a few people that we need to.
Sure.
Knock on the door and talk to them about these projects, it would be very good if you could look at your.
Anything, anything after next fr- after this Friday?
Uh, which would be the seventh, or eight?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Next week would be fine.
Okay, let me, let me look at that, I am going to have a fun time on the next meeting date, on the seventeenth, I'm having a hip replacement.
Oh, yay.
So I will not be available for that meeting.
Okay.
And for a couple of weeks thereafter, I'm sure, as I recuperate.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, Holly.
Yes. Yeah, okay, anything else then?
That's it.
Alright.
Do you need more?
No, no, I, well, that's fine, that's fine. Alright, old business, uh, old business, hell, new business. They, everybody has seen that they tore the house down here in the corner, I did talk this, I did talk to Mr. Newford.
What did he have to say, I have, I have an update on that.
Okay, at the, I talked to him Thursday evening, and he doesn't have any immediate plans for it, he just wanted to get it down.
I gotta call.
Well, that's an improvement.
Yeah.
John Reeves. John, John Reeves called me today and asked me about it, and asked if it had been tested for, um.
Asbestos.
Asbestos, which I didn't think of, but she reminded me that we did not issue the permit, he went to the county and got it. And then did it the next day, so I said, the county issued the permit, so you might talk to them, and he, why would the county issue it? And I said, because they, he went in there, asked for it, and he was a little upset about that, I said, it happens occasionally, but.
Sure.
But anyway, it was done before we knew it, and I said, I didn't know if, if a house is a certain age, do you always test for asbestos? And he said, anything that's, that's a public, um, site, that'll be a public site. And I said, well, I don't know what it's gonna be, then we didn't see anything in plans, and we had heard, but it was just rumored that it was gonna be park, uh, car park, car, parking lot.
Oh, parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, car lot, yeah, so he said, that's a public place, so he said, what is Mr. Nu- Newford's number? He called him today, so I, I'm sure, but I was glad, glad he took care of it.
Sure, sure, okay, alright, good, good. I, also, I, I had made mention in our last meeting, uh, I'm glad that we'll have a conversation. I, I'm gonna need some more complaint.
More what?
More complaint slips.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I've got, uh, right now, I've got four houses that are in one area or another, need some attention. Uh, and the one that burned out here is moving forward, yes, yes, okay, alright. So I've got trash in the back of the pickup truck, part of the yard, I've got the lady down here across, and so I've been looking at who the owners are. So I think we oughta contact not only the person, but the owner of the property too. And say, this is what is gonna happen if you, we don't.
Yeah, we really haven't done the second step, all we do is get the complaint and either pass it along to the police or.
Well, I think, I think that.
We need to have us more.
We need to go, we need to take an officer with us and have a conversation with the, and with the owner and with the property, the person that lives there at the same time.
Right, and, and I've seen other towns asking that question, how do you handle your complaints, what are the steps, and I think we need to.
Change that just a little bit.
Change that, yeah, so we thought, have more follow up.
Uh-huh, yeah, so anyway.
If I send you a PDF, can you print out as many as you want, or do you want?
Oh, yeah, if you send it to me, that'd be great, that would be great. Uh, other than that, I really don't have, I know that, uh, uh, the foundation, working with, uh, Covenant Libby. I'm gonna be picking trees up here probably in another week or so, and, uh, that will be get them planted along hillside and in some other places. I don't have really anything else.
John, another item here, uh, just a thought process, at some point in time, maybe at the end of this year, beginning of next year. I'd like to have our building inspector and the county's building inspector, and maybe the director of planning and zoning. All have a joint meeting to discuss the protocols between the county and the towns as we enter into these problems and all. I think it will help everybody understand who the others are, and, uh, the building inspector can, you know, they can introduce each other.
Sure.
You know, and talk about how their standards are the same or different on certain issues.
Sure.
I think it'd be a good discussion.
Probably would be, I would think so. Also, uh, in my meeting with Sam Hawes about the sewer for the jail. Drew called me last week and sent some information to me about their, he talked to four different contractors about the cost of upgrading. From the fifth street station out to forty-six, so they could hook on to the sewer line. Three of them were traditional dig up the line, replace the pipe, and then we're gonna go from an eight to a twelve inch line. The fourth one, and this is, this is, sounds really odd, but it's a system called pipe bursting. And they actually go into the existing pipe and put in a new and push it out. Uh, I had never heard of it or anything, Drew said these people have worked all over Midwest and with great success. And so what they're, what the county's looking at is somewhere between one point four to two point three million, depending on who does it and what they do.
Where is the county on the jail project?
They would like to get everything signed and, and all that works by next spring, so. But I'm having, I'm gonna have a meeting with Sam the end of this week, and then I'm going to the commissioner's council meeting. With that information, and don't be surprised if they don't come back wanting us to help them pay for it.
I was thinking the other thing that we talked about the last meeting was the, um, the growth that's going on out in county. That their people are calling, builders are calling to figure out how to get hooked up to sewer. We, we really need to be able to work on that and give them a response of some sort, um, and I guess it means working with the county on that, so I don't know.
It does.
Do you need to know, I don't, I don't know who the builder is or anything, but it might not hurt to find out who is building and what they're doing. Ryan was the one that talked to someone.
Okay, alright.
Um, it's just, if they're talking about it now, I'm sure they're gonna start in the spring and.
They're gonna want some, some answers.
We've got to, yeah, we've got to start getting answers.
Alright.
I'll see what I can find out, if anybody else can find out anything.
Yeah, anyway, that's what, that's why I had a conversation with Drew for about half an hour, about the cost of that project. And what would it all entail to get, so they could get hooked up to sewer service. That would give, twelve inch line would give a, if they would grow in the future at some point. And also take care of some growth beyond Walmart, that direction if we need to, so. And take care of the school for the next twenty-five years, so. Okay.
I don't know if it falls under old or new business, but we do need to have an executive session, um, to discuss, well, now also kind of, um, you know. Mike's absence and kind of what we need to do in light of some of that, but also the, um, replacing Hunter's position or similar. Job description or otherwise, um, and I, I think it would be good to have all four of us at that meeting. Um, look at job descriptions, what we want out of that, um, and, and where to, how to move forward from where we're at now on that. Perhaps on the twenty-fourth, the park meets at six, would everyone be available to meet at five?
It's a Monday.
Yeah, Monday the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, Monday the twenty-fourth.
Of November.
At five, you say? That's fine with me.
And do we need to publish an executive session?
You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna be.
Oh, shoot, yeah, he just had new surgery, uh, the week before.
And I might be able to participate by phone or something like that, but I don't think you need to have an executive session, okay? Don't think that's gonna fall under the auspices of, uh, this is just a general conversation about.
Work session.
Type thing and all.
Work session, okay, okay.
Special session.
Or even if you wanna send some notes and just your thoughts, and then we can read it in email. Recover and don't feel pressured.
There is no rush to do anything before the holidays, I would think.
Oh, I'd just like to move forward on it, but if, if.
Well, we can have a meeting, and then we can decide to end out long.
Well, one time, one time, Frank, we spotted another week.
December?
I mean, thirty, thirty-first, wasn't it?
Uh, December the first, before that is our meeting, whatever meeting, would just be five o'clock on the first?
Yeah, that would work, if you can.
Okay, that's that for everyone, okay. I just wanna not get away from that.
Okay.
Alright, thank you everyone.
Did you have anything?
No, I came to pick this up and also Drew would like to compete on your agenda for the next meeting, November seventeenth, maybe November seventeenth. Forward, um, the next step of the design work for the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, sweet. Alright. So, you know, are there any public comments, anything else?
Nothing from the peanut gallery.
Okay, alright, alright, well, we are gonna do claims.
I recorded it again.
Sure, okay.
Okay, that's great, uh, we need it, um, she's been recording.
I, I, I saw you come out and find the microphone there sometime in the middle.
Bring anything up?
Well, that's kinda funny, he was a, built for a keyboard and mouse.
Well, she was my son's first one, and then, yeah.
Yeah, I was having a couple of years, and I went back and I couldn't, I couldn't use either computer, I didn't have anything.
Mouse I've been using at school for the last fifteen years died on me the other day.
Oh, it was weird.
Yeah.
Since the week.
Yes. We started using, oh, Walmart used to be, we used it for small supplies, you know? Um, they have discontinued their credit card, their Walmart credit card.
Oh, yeah.
And they wanted us to sign up for another bank card to be used at Walmart, which we already have a bank card, so there's no reason.
Okay.
Um, so we didn't do that, but we have been ordering from Amazon, and most of everything is delivered the next day, it's so convenient.
Oh, I know, probably get it from you the next day, I'm sure it'll get to me the next day.
It's almost, it's crazy, I don't know how much you order or what you do, but, I mean, we get all the supplies, we get our bathroom supplies. And all the parts that they need for the street department, because it's a business of commerce, you can have access to a lot more than.
Next year you get it, look into your desk, I drove them.
That's true.
I mean, that's kind of, school has known, Amazon almost exclusively for a lot of things. Um, and you know, I don't have to like to go, uh, check out the credit card, then go to the location and buy it, and then come back. I just need to do a screenshot that I want and send it to the office, and then they place the order. I didn't see the, I didn't see the signature for you on the white one either.
You should've heard her last word, and I think you'd be picking it up.
I'd make a motion with, uh, accept claims as presented, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd make a motion that we would adjourn.
Aye.
I'm six fifty.